I'm out of time. Okay, that's okay. I'll call, I'll get the picture. No, that's okay.
Well, go ahead and just rise for the, uh, for National Anthem. For the, Ms. Helms will be singing the National Anthem. Um, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for attending our 9:00 AM workshop and special meeting. And I believe we can just go right into our workshop and then do we open the special meeting in a little bit? Okay. So with that, I will turn it over to School Resource Officer Program.
Our Sheriff's Office and the School Resource Officers continue to do an excellent job for us in all of our schools. And today we have Lieutenant Kevin Pierington and Sergeant Ron Frank who are going to give you the annual update on how things are going in the schools. And I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Pierington.
First of all, good morning. Nice to be back every year to see you all and kind of give you an update on where we're at and what we're doing. And this time if you can pull up the PowerPoints, do you all have those at this point? Okay. There we go. And to start out, just remember under Florida State Statute 119.071 that there's certain information that we talk about in a closed session that is exempt from public record. So this portion of the presentation will be all that information that we will share and is open to the public. So any questions that you have that are security specific will have to save for a closed session. Okay, with that, what we'd like to do, because we do change a little bit in the structure of our program and where we put our personnel, is you see the first slide is our allocation. There are still 14 School Resource Officer positions in the county. Two of those are sergeants position, one on the west side, one on the east side. We still have one at each high school. We have one assigned to each middle school and they now have a feeder elementary school. So they are assigned responsibility with one elementary school. Then we have one at the Renaissance Center that also shares call, on-call responsibility with the Crest School. And then we have one that does a full-time elementary position covering two schools and one that covers the elementary. And also on the days that the middle school is covering his feeder elementary, that float position then goes to the middle schools on alternate days. We won't be able to tell you the exact schedule because that is security sensitive, but just let you know that they do have, the middle school resource officers each have a feeder elementary and then we have replacements that go in either as the sergeant or the float position to cover on those off days. And then with that, this year, the School Resource Officer Program has inherited the crossing guards. So the sergeants on the east side and the west side are now responsible for all the crossing guards in the county. And as you can see, we have 18 permanent slots and then we have nine alternates.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
If you've got lots of people...
This part, here my panel, I'll be back in a few minutes.
Thank you. If you've got a lot of feeder schools, how do you do that? I'm thinking of Cristera Primary, Rock Crusher, Homasasa.
What basically we do, the middle school feeder school is the closest elementary in proximity to that school.
Okay.
So like Immerness Middle School Resource Officer covers Immerness Primary.
Right.
And then Cristera Middle, sometimes it can cover either Cristera Primary or Rock Crusher, one of those schools there. And then La Canto, obviously La Canto Primary. And then Citrus Springs Middle covers Central Ridge Elementary School.
Who covers Homasasa?
Homasasa is a full-time elementary person. I'll cover Homasasa.
Good, thank you.
Lieutenant Pierington, I have a question as well. So those middle school SROs that cover the elementary, those feeder elementary schools, that means they're not on campus at the middle schools for the whole week?
All the time.
Correct. Right? So are you able to share here how many days they are or is that some for a closed session?
That's for a closed session.
Okay. What is with the crossing guards? Does that mean you're training, keep track of them? Is that what I...
They, they manage all the aspects now of the crossing guards. That used to be an auxiliary type position in the Sheriff's Office that managed that. And now it's been directly turned over to our unit because the SROs have probably the most direct contact with the crossing guards. So the sergeants would able to have instant access and address their deeds while they're out and about.
Any training?
Yes, they think we'll be doing the training.
The crossing guards are required to be updated every once a year. And Scott, partner, myself just went through a crossing guard training school. We learned how, we're now training trainers. So what we will do is during the summer, we'll have a day with all the crossing guards and go over all the procedures that they've got to follow.
Do they have, maybe that's for a closed session, do they have communication with you when they're out there? Do they have some, like a radio or something?
They do not have standard radios with the Sheriff's Office. Most of them have cell phones.
And as far as with the Gucci Technical College, is that, how does that cover now?
Basically patrol handles probably 90% of their calls unless there, there's a specific student-based issue that we need to deal with and that's students in the school system. But as far as adult ed, we don't normally provide services for adult ed.
I'm still, I'm still pretty much the liaison over there. If they've got any issues, they contact me. And if we've got the ability to send an SRO, we will, but usually it's patrol that will handle it. But all their day-to-day things and just relationship stuff to the SRO, you know, I'll take care of that.
Okay. And also WTI has contracted with the Sheriff's Office and we do provide security at night. That is an off-duty detail.
Okay. It's Monday through Thursday night, several hours, and I don't want to know the exact hours, but we've got a deputy here most likely.
Very good.
And as you know, our model that we follow is known as the Triad Concept. This is the national model for School Resource Officer Programs and it's designed primarily for student interaction, not basically reacting to incidences that happen on campus, but through law-related teaching, law-related counseling. Two-thirds of the component is interacting with the kids in a positive setting and also getting to know the students and addressing issues while they're still small before they get bit. And you know, our big motto is to protect and educate. That's what we go by. So that hasn't changed. We still operate under that philosophy. And these are just some statistical numbers. Last year, on the left, you'll see the total numbers. That's from August to May, classes taught. And then this year is just the half year, kind of give you a snapshot where we are through December, first semester. And of course, we're still teaching our programs in elementary school, the junior focus program, first grade, child lawyers, third grade, focus, fifth grade. Then a middle school, it's no law and high school choices. The next slide is our counseling, law-related counseling sessions. And that's the total number of students on the left-hand column that we actually had interaction with last year and then so far this year.
Tell me about the parent sessions.
The parent sessions are where parents call in and they either have no other options. They're dealing with their child and they're looking for resources and help or strategies to help them better manage their, their children. But most of them, they're looking for resources and then we point them in the right direction. Youth and family alternatives, the centers, DJJ, thermal probation, those kind of things. We do want to mention, we still are very active in our Safe Schools Interagency Team for Prevention. And again, this is identifying some of our students who need some type of outside resources to help them. And we try to identify them and point the parents in the right direction to help them out. And anything more specific on that would be a closed session.
You know what I was going to say. It's all good, it was. If you only give her that, we are out of here.
And then our enforcement component, again, on the left-hand side is our totals, 257 reports. Now, these are just reports written on campus. Forty-five Baker Acts and 20 tobacco citations were the last school year. So a total of 48 arrests. Those are physical arrests on campus. And then 36 juvenile citations. That's where if they're a first-time offender, they're able to go through DJJ's diversionary program. And then we just took some of the basic charges, the ones that we really try to keep track of, that's your drugs on campus, your alcohol on campus, and your violence charges. Our weapons have dropped considerably, so most of those are battery arrests, but you see violence charges. And then again, on the right-hand side is the half of the school year where we're at currently.
The arrests are the things that happened at school?
Yes, these are all on-campus arrests.
Yeah, that's right. And the Baker Acts, do they go still to Ocala area or to the East?
Yes, if, if they're under a Baker Act, they either can go to the Brooksville facility or to Ocala American Center.
One other thing with the juvenile citations that we do now, sometimes you'll see where we actually physically arrest a child, sometimes we'll do the juvenile citation, sometimes you see that with expulsions. DJJ is really pushing for us to use juvenile citations for all first offenders. So if you remember back years ago, anytime there was a, a drug case on campus, it was almost always an arrest, even alcohol. Where now we're being pushed from DJJ to use those diversions. So that's why you're not seeing as many arrests on expulsions and you're seeing more of the teen court citations come through.
Is that, I don't know, that covers all, knives?
Usually it's all first-time misdemeanors. So sometimes batteries, disruption, it's a little harder to use that for because the kids usually aren't calming down and then the arrest is our only option. But for your alcohol and your drug charges.
And then, as you're aware, we do have a Campus Crime Stopper Program and it's very active. Last year, we had 55 Crime Stopper tips come in and so far we're at 17. Just some of the examples of what...
Make more this year.
Yeah, so far we, we have the, and we, we have a new...
You did.
Campus Crime Stopper Director and agrees with the philosophy of giving kids a little bit more. And it's growing. We'll get anywhere from two to 10 tips a week, seems like. And it can be any issue from bullying to tobacco to fighting. Any issue like that does not have to be a law-related offense for them to give a tip. If there's a problem identified on campus and we're able to solve it, then we do give them money.
So Kevin, on that 21 still open tips from 13, 14, are those, you guys are continuing to kind of look at those cases or...
To the best we can, either there wasn't enough information to do an investigation or the tip just never panned out.
And tip has to be something that's related to something serious, it's not like, then bringing us home or it has to be some criminal.
Yeah, well, bullying to where maybe it's not at the criminal level, but there's some type of friction or argument between two students or someone sees something, where we can address it early on, where we may not have an arrestable charge, we still can pay out for that.
We've had, we've had tips come in that, you know, we think two people are going to get into a fight, you know, tip will come in and say it's second period class, so-and-so is arguing with someone else. And that gets to us and we get the guidance counselors involved. So it might not pan out into anything where the child will receive a, something in a reward, but they're getting the information to us so we get out there and solve things. So also the middle schools, we actually have it on the iPad. There's an actual app on the iPad that they go to. It's a different approach.
And again, this is just for those students who, for whatever reason, does, does not feel comfortable coming forward to the SRO. Still, most of the students go directly to the School Resource Officer and bypass this program.
Ms. Helms got something to do.
Just in case. And I think our board's very aware of our partnership with Sheriff's Department. And as I traveled throughout the state, I've heard, I know y'all are trying to make that comment, but I've been out there quite a bit lately, but other superintendents asked us, how do you do what you do with the crimes and those types of things, Sheriff's Department? And I usually tell them it's because the sheriff and myself have each other's cellphone numbers. So there is a great partnership and I would like for you all to remind the board, update the board on our STP program because I think we're probably the only school district in the state of Florida that even has that type of program.
Yeah, and the specifics though, I'd like to save for a closed session. I know Ms. Powers had some specific questions, but yeah, it's, again, just to reiterate, it's identifying at-risk kids as soon as possible when they enter the school system and see if we can't solve their issues through resources that we currently have or external resources, which are some of our county partnerships with our other agencies to help get these kids on the right track.
Well, I've known so many years, and I've gotten more teenagers, you know, seem to focus, they will first start out with support-based program and then you're focusing more and more, I guess, on the things that, that I see by this campaign, more focused, but it's becoming very, very focused, which is a program that helps people more if they're focused, they're focused and any of those are focused about, indeed.
We, with our new computer system, our reports, we have all the SROs, everybody report every morning and it will show any police report written the day before involving a juvenile. And it will list what school they go to. So the deputies will read those, SROs will read those reports and see if it's something that it needs to be followed up on. You know, if there's domestic violence in the house, if something happened or even if it might have been a burglary in the home and the child was, came home and found it, we'll, we'll, we'll interact with that child and see if they had any issues, any concerns. Now, that might not rise to the level of STP depending on the incident, but what'll happen is over time, we'll keep monitoring that child and we'll also see if they continue to appear in police reports and determine if we need to develop some other interaction with them.
And I have to say, what I think that's been exciting to watch over the years I've been serving the board is how there's a proactiveness to the SRO program, not a reactiveness. You said what I was really excited to hear and I've seen that where you're, you know, the SROs are going out, reading those reports, even sometimes just checking on kids of incidences that they see to make sure that they have some support. It may not even be that there's a problem with that young person, but maybe they just want to make sure there won't be or that they don't need to interact with them. So I, I value so much that you guys have been proactive in your approaches so that we're not having to be reactive later.
And I just want to go back to the STP program because I do think that's a program in our district that we should be very proud of. That also includes our social work with our guidance counselors, our assistant principals, all have key contact person, includes the centers, it includes DJJ, it includes DCF. And this is a partnership that we all sign an agreement that if something happens to Linda Powers in the elementary board, that we're all able to talk together rather than this agency working on something, this agency, but they all come together. And they do this quarterly, don't be shared at that meeting. So we come together quarterly or they do and they really work on these students. And I think there's 80 to 100 kids that's been involved in this program. So it is, it's just, it's a remarkable program to thank you all.
So it is to meet the areas.
And that's one of the things that we've found is with us being the, the national model for the SRO programs, on the actual flyer that goes out, it discusses the STP program. And we'll get calls from other agencies asking, how do you implement it? And we'll say, everybody's got to work it up. And it's got to be a bind from the school board, it's got to be a bind from the Sheriff's Office, it's got to be a bind from the centers. And these other agencies are unable to get all the players to the table to make it happen. And it's, they've tried, but nobody can seem to get done what we've accomplished here. And it's really been a great program. And you know, we, we speak about it from the SRO side of how we refer kids into it, but you know, like Mrs. Hemel said, that the guidance counselors can see something on their end and get a child involved with it and it could come down from the centers. But it's that collaborative effort of us all working together to work in the best interest of the children and their families.
And you want to, and the students see it as these are people to help, not to punish them. That's very positive.
And one of the other things is our partnership programs with the Florida Sheriff Youth Ranches. As you know, we were able to provide summer camps for kids and we do utilize the schools for that, the elementary schools specifically. Sometimes we use a middle school. This year, they received some grants and we'll actually have a full week out at the Cruth Camp, up to 72 students from Citrus County of just our week alone. So they're not sharing a week with anyone. And then we'll also have five summer camps this year. So we'll be able to keep a lot of those kids busy in the summer for a whole week. And a lot of them are repeat kids that keep coming back because they enjoy the program so much. So we do value the, the youth ranch and our partnership with them. And then also our Anti-Drug Coalition in Citrus County. We work hand in hand and as you all well know, I think that Triad partnership with us together helps get information out and get feedback from the students. And we all work together to combat the, the problems that we have therapeutically.
You know, I saw on your enforcement kind of summary there, does, does some of those just, in just each year, it might be like, it looks like, you know, this year tobacco's up a little bit, but it looks like alcohol charges are way down. You know, I mean, it's just, it's like, you know, circular?
Sometimes it cycles and sometimes we identify a trend and we attack it. Prescription drugs took off really big. If you remember in the, probably 2008, 2009, and then we did a huge campaign partnering with the school system and the Anti-Drug Coalition and our efforts. And we were able to get most of those pills out of the schools, which is very hard compared to look at the, the state averages and everything. And now we get maybe two or three, we call them controlled substance arrests every year. So the kids are definitely getting, you can't bring these things to school. And through education, telling them, you know, just because it's prescribed by a doctor doesn't mean it can't harm you. And through those efforts alone, I think we were able to identify a trend and almost eradicate it. And the same thing with our synthetic drugs that we see, it started showing up in the schools, we attacked it. We took a different method, we, we got them out of most of the convenience stores and we're still waiting for an ordinance. Hopefully that'll be passed soon. I'm on the third county attorney, so I'm hoping that we can move that along. But that's why we have these partnerships and when we see these trends, alcohol and tobacco, that is kind of, one year it's high, the next year it's low. And we, we continue to fight that battle since it is very popular.
The synthetic one we really appreciate is it was scary on multiple levels and you, it is clear that you all attacked that and successfully.
If you look at synthetics, when they first came out, the first couple of cases we had in the schools, we didn't know how to handle because it wasn't against the law. It wasn't a problem of working with you all in the schools. We quickly identified it to at least be equivalent to, to tobacco. And then when we realized the problems we were coming up with it, with the kids that were ending up in the emergency rooms and things like that, that's when we took the different angle and said, you know, this is well beyond tobacco, it's more of a drug itself. And that's when we brought it to the next level for you all. And once we got the Coalition involved and it made a really good change. Now, a few years ago, we were having four or five cases, it seemed like a month of synthetics in the schools. I don't think we've had one this year. You know, it's been, it's been a remarkable term. I mean, it's just been a great partnership all the way around.
Okay, that concludes the follow-up process. Unless there's any questions that you'll have. Board members?
Excellent, thank you for everything you do.
We appreciate it, Mrs. Frank.
So the Teen Driver Challenge, I know we have your information on that, but can you give you a little update on that and where that's headed and if there's ways we can improve that or what your feelings are on the Teen Driver Challenge?
Yeah, the Resource Officers basically just wear the mechanism to funnel the kids through the program. We don't really perform the program or have any other part other than that to do that. We still offer it and it's on a rotation basis at each high school. And we prefer that the kids go through that program before they get a parking permit. And we know as time and schedules permit, sometimes they're allowed to park on campus when they don't have the program, but we do encourage all the students to eventually go through that program.
That's another one of those partnerships where when we talk to different agencies around the state, I believe we're the only one in the state of Florida that allows the students to go out to the Teen Driver Challenges like a field trip during the school day. Every, all the other agencies have to do it on the weekend or during the summer where we've incorporated into what we do. And with working with the schools and tying in the parking permits has made a big difference in getting more and more kids out there. My son went through it a few years ago and just, you talk to these kids that have gone through it and the lessons that they've learned and the things that they've learned from it, it's, it's a great program.
Who's the coordinating agency or person, is that still through the Sheriff's Office?
Still Nancy Sudo is still, even though she's not in training anymore, she's still the one that heads up the program.
Okay. The other question I had is with the technology in our schools, have, have you had any issues with that as far as inappropriate use of an iPad or sending of inappropriate pictures or anything like that? Is there any information?
Yeah, when we first got the devices, obviously we knew there, there could be a spike. And I think with the amount of devices out there and the amount of incidents, we had, I would say it's very, very small, very, very minimal. We, we do have cases with kids on their cell phones and their home computers, but very little with the iPads that are actually distributed to the kids through the school system.
Yeah, what we've seen is if the school does a great job of monitoring the iPads and what the kids are doing on them and making sure that it's all school-appropriate, it's their own personal devices that we're having problems with.
And then the other question I had was on the Renaissance Center with SRMI and working there, I was able to go out and tour that facility and saw the Deputy Ferretti and saw some good things going on there. But just where are we or what is your views on, on the program? And I know some, I have a couple of questions, maybe you can come out and close session on that, but can you just give us a little update at our, how are our stats? Is there anything there we can look at comparatively right now?
The stats are pretty much consistent with the same population that were there in years past that are there now. You know, obviously there are higher at-risk population and we do have more incidences that we are dealing with, but with, with their staff and their programs that they are enacting with the kids and our philosophy, we haven't seen, you know, an increase in the amount of arrests that we're making out of there. We are making progress with the students. There was an adjustment period in the beginning of the year because it was a change in program and a change in philosophy. Since then, it's kind of leveled off now.
Well, I too wanted to say thank you for all that you did with Kevin and Ron. Man, you guys have got the years in, how many years, I'm just curious, how many years? How many invest, how many, how many years, that's pretty old.
They're not that old because I taught.
Really?
When I, when I first started doing presentations to the board and things like that, I used to talk about us being highly, young and highly motivated individuals, like kind of taking young out of the equation.
How many years do you have in Ron in the schools?
Twenty years.
Twenty years in these schools?
Yeah, we did, we did the big expansion in 94. When we added all the, the full-time high school, middle school, that was 94.
Yeah, so great.
21 years, yeah.
Great, that's awesome.
We still love it. I mean, it's not a passion for it, but it's, it's communication, it's the partnership. That's what makes our program above the rest of that.
You don't have Sergeant Farmer here, you're still trying to bring him along, so it's probably good, but...
If he was here, we'd still be on the first slide.
Yes, you would. Gentlemen, thank you. And you know, it does, oh, Ms. Powers, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I'm so very pleased with your refinement program, like I said earlier, because you've been focusing on more and more of what needs to be done, change what has changed here. And also the cooperation between the agencies, which for an ex-councilor, knowing how it was, one time, that is thrilling to know how it is now and sort of very fluidly, deeply cooperating with the agencies.
The only thing I just want to say too is, is we know you guys are, are starting to look at the next, just as you said, some of the next stages of your life. We could really use that next generation too of SROs that can learn from you all as they come in. And so I would encourage anyone that's looking at law enforcement and has a passion for children, please look at the SRO program because we really believe in it. It's been a great partnership and we look forward to many years ahead. Thank you, gentlemen. And I believe we can move into Code of Student Conduct. Good morning, Ms. Regina.
Good morning.
We have an exciting morning because we had another no expulsions. It's exciting!
Well, this is doing a wonderful job in the monitoring. Mr. Bradshaw obviously did a great job this year in sharing the code with the schools and the schools are doing a great job in monitoring their campus. Looks like the code today, the colored code is brown. It must be the, the weather outside, the brown just makes you feel warm. Well, good morning, school board members. Chairperson, Mr. Kennedy, Superintendent Ms. Hemel, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Mullin, School Board Attorney, Mr. Bradshaw. It is that time of year where I bring forward to you the suggested revisions for the Code of Conduct for the 2015, 2016 school year. Before I begin those presentations to you, I just wanted to take a few minutes to publicly thank Ms. Linda Powers for her many years of serving as the school board representative on our Code of Conduct Committee. Her service was surely appreciated. Her service was surely appreciated, and I think it helped move some processes along. So, thank you, and you will be missed. On the other side, I'm very excited to welcome our newest member, Mr. Doug Dodd, to that committee, and I speak for the committee members as well as myself, we look forward to working with you in that capacity. So, welcome a year ahead of time. If I could just ask the board for a few minutes to explain the process of the annual review for the Code of Conduct. In September, our Department of Student Services begins the process by setting a date to try to ensure all stakeholders are available in December for this review. After we set that date in September, we start the process in October of reminding schools and district departments of that meeting and the importance of them gathering information from their SAC committee members, members as well as all stakeholders in their responsibility areas. December 3, we did bring the committee together, and we met for the annual review of the code. A week after that meeting, we then set out the minutes from that meeting to confirm with the committee members that what was discussed and agreed upon for suggestions to bring to you today was duly noted. And it brings us here today for me to share those recommendations with you. And it would please the board, I'd also like to recognize at this time those members who served on that committee, so that you can all hear the variety of stakeholders we had at that meeting, knowing the importance of our code. It is our bible, and what we hold our schools and our departments responsible for. We had representatives from the schools, which included assistant principals, a couple of principals, we had school counselors, and we had school staff, both mainstream, support, as well as ESE population. We also had district department and administration representatives, which included departments such as transportation, informational services, the ESE department, and ed services. We had our school resource officer there, we had two parents represented at that committee meeting, as well as student representatives. This year, we had representation from all three high schools, we were very happy about that outcome. And of course, we had our school board attorney, Mr. Bradshaw there, who helps us with the process when questions come up pertaining to possibly something involving a legal answer. So, I publicly want to thank everybody for their input in that process, knowing how important it is. And that brings us to why we're here today. You should have in front of you, attached to the school board request agenda, several pages of the proposed changes or revisions for next year's Code of Conduct. You also should have with you, in case you want to reference it, this current year's Code of Conduct. The way these pages are set up is we've lifted out the specific part of the code where a suggested revision was mentioned and voted on to bring forward to you today. So, if I could bring you, Pete, please to page one of your handout.
Ms. Regina, if you could pause for just one second, and I just wanted to get clarification from Mr. Bradshaw, and also because this is Mr. Dodd's first time with this, so that he understands and we review ourselves. At this time, sir, we're workshopping, we can make changes if we so desire, we can give direction, and this is our opportunity, Mr. Dodd, where we can, we still have time to make those modifications, then it will come to us for us to put on...
Do you think it's another reason to be approved perhaps in line with the existing public? Or publicly, is it to me, they do their, or come back and add to the government?
The only thing we could do is either reject it and then start the process over again, which we would prefer not to do at all possible. But, so, I say this so that we know, and Mr. Dodd knows, this is an opportunity for us where we can have input and that would result in change. Thank you, Ms. Regina. I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am?
Going through all this, the school board member on the committee often says to the group, this becomes a pursuit of this, this help to the school, this help to the school. So, really be sure that everything that's said here is very clear and be interpreted, easily interpreted, and Regina's always been so good about saying, okay, let's make sure that all they get to the school board that they know exactly what is being said. Because they're fantastic. And it was kind of, sure, Regina always takes it in mind, and gives them the SRS replies, and be sure that it's clear.
And our administrators, I know, regularly pull this code out and say, okay, what does the code say and how's it read, and so you are absolutely right, it's the way we all read it, we're trying to interpret even what we pass, so...
Very well said, yes, thank you. All right. Again, if I can bring your attention to page one, we begin at the very beginning on page two of the current Code of Conduct. Page two, under Citrus County Schools Code of Conduct, it was recommended to delete the last part of the sentence in paragraph one, specifically taking out the verbiage under the age of 20, knowing that we have students in our system who are over the age of 20. With the board's permission, I'm going to just move forward unless there's a question.
Board members, just if you do have something along the way, if you just speak up, and that way we can, otherwise, Ms. Regina will just continue on.
Thank you. If I could bring your attention to page two, we go to page eight in the current Code of Conduct. The first paragraph, we'd like to add the verbiage to include the school social worker, knowing that because of our refinement of our school, of student services organizational flow chart, we've now added school social workers to take on the responsibility, working with the schools, some schools with school attendance. Okay, page three of your handout, which refers to page 10 in our current Code of Conduct. This page and the next page has to do with health information. I'll preface with you, the additions recommended to this section have to do with the policy that came before you in the beginning of the school year of over-the-counter medication and prescription medication, that a Citrus County form needs to be completed by the doctor and parent for medication to be on campus and administered. The addition in red at the bottom of page three, that verbiage medication should be brought to school only if it is necessary to give the medication during school hours, that verbiage was in the code already, it was under the first paragraph, it was recommended to bring it at the beginning of the paragraph so that parents would be aware of it.
On page, on that page three, you use the term Tylenol, is that just, that's just for the example purposes, that's not a defining, meaning that that's the only thing? It could be Anacin, whatever, the, the semenethin?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the time to...
Yes, sir.
The student authorization to carry form, is that, where is that kept? Is it, the student keeps it on them, like with their medicine, or do they file it with somebody at the school?
That is a form that is found either online or in the school's clinic, for the parent to have the physician sign that for them, and is then kept on record in the student's cune health folder.
So, that means if my daughter needs to have cough drops at school, it might just be better that I have that form signed and then just have it on file, like at the beginning of the year?
You're half correct, sir, yes, and I understand where the confusion might be, so if I could clarify, that student authorization to carry form enables a student to carry only specific items as per Florida statute, and that is a metered dose inhaler.
Okay, so it's the student authorization for over-the-counter medication form that needs to be filled out?
There's, there's three...
You're only going to be able to carry Chapstick and Sunscreen?
We, you know, we haven't gotten to that, down to that part, but I think I know what you're asking.
Outside of that, you have to have doctor's permission to bring your medicine to school, and then it's kept...
And that form that has to be filled out is kept in their file?
Yes, sir.
It's not kept on their persons with their medicine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just for clarification, they're not going to be able to keep their medicines on them, and that's what they're saying, even cough drops, as this says, cough drops, Anacin, any of those things, they still cannot keep on them.
And I think, Mr. Kennedy, I probably should have clarified that, and I apologize, this section right here, with this specific student authorization to carry, is a form that a parent and a doctor fills out, that enables the student to carry just a couple of items that statute says they can, their dose inhaler, then their epinephrine, their epinephrine injector, any diabetic supplies or pancreatic enzymes, those are the only items that students legally can carry on them. We're not, we're not yet to the part of the medication, Mr. Dodd.
Would it be helpful to bold those items? I mean, I don't have any strong feelings, I just didn't know if that's...
Let me share with you if I can...
Hold on one, Mr. Bradshaw?
Mr. Dodd. Previously, parents were allowed with a note to bring over-the-counter medication and put it in the clinic for their students to be able to take. Ms. Alagretta is correct, there's only like three things that they're allowed to carry on their person, and the things that she outlined, and that had to have doctor's permission, and it was registered through the clinic, so that we knew that if you needed to have a metered dose inhaler, we knew that your child was going to have one if it's on the floor, or epinephrine. But previously, years ago, I could write a note and say, here's a bottle of Tylenol, please allow my son to take, or the instructions on it. Now, over-the-counter medications have to have the same formality as a written prescription, so now, if I want my son to have Tylenol, I have to have the doctor's permission to do it. And is that the form, is that the form, is it going to cover that too, Regina?
No, and the only thing that we added to this was that we now have a district form. In the past, we just had a parent sign a piece of paper with a doctor, but for these three things that they can carry, we just have a district form now.
That's just an overall kind of catch-up on what has gone on with the over-the-counter medication, because they're considered medication, because the nurses and the schools, they cannot administer medication without a doctor's, without a doctor's prescriptions, and that's why we're back to that process. Except, except the board decided that Chapstick, non-medicated Chapstick or the form and Sunscreen were...
I'm concerned, though, do I could, is, do you feel this is a easy step, or should we reword or something? We've worked with it so long, we just sort of pass it, but it could be confusing.
Well, when I read through it, you know, there's, what, three different types of authorization forms? They all have a different title, right? There's three different, this looks like there's...
Yes.
So, and are we, are we have to have three forms because of statute, or why don't we just have one form for a parent to fill out?
There's really two forms, sir. There's this one here, which is the authorization to carry, which only encompasses those above-mentioned items. The other form is for an over-the-counter...
There's also one for prescription.
And there is, the form is not needed for that, the prescription itself is the authorization. Have I missed something, Ms. Carnavale? Ms. Carnavale, I'm going to bring her up here, she oversees this more frequently than I.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The reason we have two different forms is the prescription form we need because we need the parent's signature giving us authorization to give that prescription to that child. That's what that form is for, we don't need the doctor to sign that, because the prescription that's on the bottle is also already the doctor's orders to give that medication. But on that authorization to give the prescription medicine, the parent signs it, giving us the authority to give that medication to their child. We have the over-the-counter one, which the parents also sign, give us the authority to give it to the child, but we added last year or beginning of this year, that we want a physician to sign that. Part of the school health administrative guidelines, which is our policy to follow, recommends that we have a doctor's signature because of the multitude of over-the-counter medications that are on the market, to have a doctor say that this is okay to give, because there are so many different students and so many different meds out there, it just gives us another backup that they give to us. And then that third form, which is the authorization to carry, covers those four different medications. By state law, we have to allow a student, given their doctor's permission, to carry that, and of course, the parent has to sign that, giving permission that their student is capable of taking care of their meds themselves.
Okay, and then with that, a separate form is required for each medication, did I read that right?
Yes.
So, if a child has Tylenol and cough drops and...
There's a separate form for each one, and they're with the school administrative record, so when a student comes into the clinic and the health room attendant gives them their Tylenol for their headache, they have to fill out a medication administrative record that says, I give the child that at this time of day, or whatever, on this date. That is stapled to the order, so that you know, when you're working in the health room, say you're a sub, you know that that is actual order for that student, parent signed it, they can verify that we can give it to that student. That's why we have a separate one for each one.
It just seems to me, I mean, I like to keep it as simple as we can, it's already, you know...
But if we had a, like, if we had one, and like, we had parents write like, three or four different medications across the top, you could have somebody come in and add another one, and we don't know if that one gave you authority to it, if you have a separate one, we know that parent signed for that one, and nobody, like, on the way in wrote an extra one on there, or somebody working in the clinic that they wrote it on there. It just proves to me that there's a separate one, and the parent and the doctor order each one, or give permission for each one.
Similar to a script, where you don't have multiple medications on a single prescription?
Yeah.
So, that you're not wondering, okay, which part's for which thing? So, you're asking for a single document for each one of the items?
Yes, so that we can, we have to have a single medication administration record for each medication that we're giving to the student, and this way we can attach that order, as you would say, with it, so we can verify, like, when I go in and do my QI, because it's unverifying that we have a different medication record for each medication we're giving, and unverifying that I have, we have permission to give each of those medications. So, they can be attached together, so it's easy for the clinic person, it's easy for the state when they come in and audit us, it's easy for me when I go in and audit the schools. But I see what you mean, I try to make it easier for the parents, we put all of them online, so they don't have to come into the school to pick it up, we did that this year, just trying to make it easier, because I understand, I'm a parent too, I've had to go into the school, pick a med, drop them off.
Right.
Okay, any other questions, sir?
I'd just like to, Mr. Dodd, we've had some, many heated conversations over this policy, and I know that our nurses and the nursing staff, they're really putting their license on the line, we've asked their same question, because sometimes it seems like we want something to do with this lately. We, I want to say give and then come up, in fact, we're almost happy now, but there's been a lot of conversation, and it's one of the state grounds. In fact, I called Joyce Frank the other day, and she said she may call us because she knows we've had these conversations, and every hand, and with, now, every school district, and I've had to hand every student, and Joyce might explain it now, but also, we didn't have, we just can't give them out, so, and everything sounds weird, so...
Go right ahead.
Thank you. If I can bring your attention to page four, I'd ask Ms. Carnavale to sit up close in case she can explain that a little better than I can. On page four, the five bullets that are in red, as Mr. Dodd alluded to, those are the extra pieces of information we wanted to make sure we had in print for the parent.
So, the, whenever it's written last, the whole year, like, if you bring it in in August, it'll last till May?
Correct.
Right, and then when you come back in August, you have to have a new one?
And for several reasons, one, we cannot keep medication in our clinics over the summer.
Right.
So, parents have to come in and pick anything up, and medicine that's left behind, it's our responsibility to legally get rid of those, whether it's prescription or over-the-counter. So, we start with nothing in August. That was poor grammar, we start with nothing, I apologize.
I understand.
Thank you.
And just so that, you know, I'm kind of trying to make sure I understand everything with being new on the board, but I know that our zero tolerance policy deals with controlled substances, narcotics, prescription meds, for that case are controlled substances, and we have a zero... we have a zero policy, zero tolerance policy. What is the, what's the policy if a student is caught with, you know, I don't know if it's in their purse or something like that in high school? What is our policy? Is there any defined discipline that we have for that?
I'm looking at Mr. Bradshaw, because I can answer that, but I think he could probably add something to that, because you're right on that question that come up for your fellow colleagues. So, did you want to address that, Mr. Bradshaw, as far as the addendum and what will be coming down the pike in the code?
Are we talking about the addendum? Or are we talking just in general? I was talking in general. It's zero tolerance. Zero tolerance is zero tolerance. Now, that is what our policy is, but I think that principals exercise some discretion for, you know, certain things, as long as it's not habitual or repeated, or different things like that. Does that make sense?
Not really.
All right. Okay, we have a zero tolerance policy for drugs, medication, anything else. Okay, your over-the-counter medication are treated the same as medication. I have not in nine years seen anybody get suspended or expelled for having cough drops in their purse, or in their pocket, or whatever, but I would imagine that if it's somebody who repeatedly, you know, saying, "You cannot bring these, you know, the next time you cannot bring these, the next time," you know, and it's kind of like gross insubordination, they're not following the principal, or the teacher's directive, then there probably will be some discipline. But we maintain a zero tolerance policy, because if my child brings Advil and gives it to your child, who has a adverse reaction, we need to be able to maintain that element, to be able to discipline for bringing this stuff to school.
That's fair enough.
That's fair.
We've tried to say, zero tolerance doesn't mean zero common sense, and we hope that the administrators first, through the student services and the superintendent, deals with some of those common sense issues before it has to rise to a board action. But I think as a board, we have said, even when we have zero tolerance, we have them for a lot of reasons, this board is trying to have common sense during discipline to say, what was the intent and what was going on? And there's a difference between our policy and what we decide in the punishment and what is statute for a zero tolerance.
I know of another district that opened up, like, they over-the-counter stuff, and at one point in time, they actually had to discipline kids, because they would bring in multiple, you know, over-the-counter medicines, and result in schools, you know, or give them out, so, it's still a zero tolerance issue, but you hopefully have some common sense that goes along with that. And we have had kids that have taken other kids' medication, and we have had, I think, some over-the-counter medications and had bad reactions to them.
So, what is the addendum?
Chapstick, sunscreen...
Lip, yeah.
Lip balm, non-medicated lip balm, because chapstick or lip balm can be medicated or non-medicated, so a non-medicated lip balm. And then sunscreen, because what the board's philosophy was, is you don't want to tell the kids that are in band, or standing outside on the field, or playing football, or playing baseball, or tennis, or whatever...
Or at the Academy of Environmental Science, yes.
Or at the Academy of Environmental Science, if they can't apply sunscreen to protect themselves from...
Well, it sounds to me like, you know, word zero tolerance, there's no opportunity. I know what Mr. Kennedy said, there's still discretion, but really, it's kind of more full tolerance for certain things that are over-the-counter. I mean, what you said, I mean, you can't say, well, in nine years, there's never been an incident, well, that's, we really haven't had a zero tolerance policy for that. So, I'm just confused a little bit, that I understand the importance of sending the message, but I don't like to be hypocritical. I mean, if we're, if we have this, we really shouldn't say we're zero tolerance on over-the-counter meds, because we're not.
They're considered the same as medication, by the federal food, drug industry, right?
Yeah. Mr. Dodd, this has been a challenge that we've had, is it's, there's a definition, a medical definition of what reference is in over-the-counter, and actually, I believe, an over-or-counter isn't even reference in it, it's referred to medication, in the, I'm talking about the administrative health practices. So, we aren't, we aren't able to make a distinguishing difference between that with comes to zero tolerance. There may be something, though, Mr. Bradshaw, that you can explain, that there is two different types of zero tolerance. There's a statute zero tolerance, and then there is a policy zero tolerance, and there is sometimes confusion between what those two are and the discretion that we have.
Well, obviously, there's a statute zero tolerance for illegal drugs, or prescription drugs, and things like that. We have this zero tolerance policy for medication. I'll talk about it.
But whether that pill is a roofie, or whatever the case may be, or if that is an aspirin, we don't have a distinguishing difference that permits us to distinguish one being a zero tolerance and one not, other than common sense. Is that correct?
Also, yes. Also, there's a section in the code where it talks about, "The school board always retains the right to review each case on its merits and circumstances and determine the appropriate penalty, notwithstanding the minimum set forth. Additionally, principals at each school shall have the discretion of waiving or modifying the mandatory 10-day suspension for students in possession." There's been a couple of incidents since my tenure of eight years where a student had something they shouldn't have. I'm not talking about marijuana, Tylenol, or their ADHD medicine that they forgot to take at home, they had it in their pocket, came to school and put it in their mouth. Administration will give me a call, we talk about the situation, we call the mom to make sure all the pills were still there, did mom know she had it? Yes, I didn't have any juice for her to take, and she can't take it with water because she chokes. The girl went to school, asked for something to drink, ingested the per medicine. So, we look at those situations individually. Was there a consequence? Yes. Was it possible expulsion? No. They did a suspension, they talked to her about because she did go against the Code of Student Conduct. She was, the SRO got involved, not have medicine on campus, reminded her of it. The school wants to set that example, if kids are not supposed to carry anything on them, they have to obey the Code of Conduct. So, we do look at each individual situation. Student didn't have a past history of discipline, but they still went against the Code of Conduct. There was a consequence for it. The code, you actually give the principals that authority to modify that mandatory consequence. But I will share with you, if they do carry something that they're not supposed to, it is brought to my department's attention, and we have conversation about it. Because like I think Mr. Kennedy shared, we don't know what they have in their pocket, what they're going to do with it. Maybe they're going to give it to another kid to see their reaction, maybe they want to sell it. So, they take it very seriously, the Code of Conduct, that they are not supposed to have anything on them, prescription, non-prescription, drug, whatever. If they know about it, they need it head-on. Does that help a little bit?
Sure.
What we'd like to do is to stay to define it, so we can, but of course, we could, it would take a lot of...
Well, we've had some individuals in the community during this that want us to give absolute answers. If my kid does this, I want to know, what are you going to do? Well, that's not really hypothetical that we can do, and I would hope that we frown from answering those type of hypotheticals, because the answer is, is common sense, we hope, prevails, both at the school level and at the board level's decision. We have 10 o'clock, so what I'm going to do is just temporarily, just if we can pause for a second, I'm going to recess the workshop, I think that was the word. And I'm going to go ahead and open our special board meeting at 10:00, and it is now 10 o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and recess the special board meeting, because we're going to go into an executive session at 10:05, so I'm going to just, I was just going to say, I'm going to give us a five-minute break, and that'll allow us to set up for that. And I'm going to ask if we can clear the room, except for those that will be taking part in the executive session. Thank you.